Great pleasure to be here today, Mark Bell, prayer and Mr. Bastian for our pledge. Had a chance to review your agenda. Any corrections or additions? Motion by Ove Van der S, second by Mrs. Susan Wilder. All those in favor say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Also, you had a chance to review your minutes of the regular session on July 29th. Any corrections other than clerical on these? Motion by Dr. Glad, second by Lisa Best. All those in favor say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving into reports. First of all, we have a health insurance report. Mr. Millstead or Mr. Murphy?
Yes, sir, I'll begin. We'll move from there. Board members, in your portfolios, there should be a document similar to this that indicates changes since we last met related to health insurance. We've had several sessions. Two years ago, we started the process of looking at an alternative plan for retirees, and we feel like that we have finally, hopefully struck gold on this thing is where we are. I'm just going to briefly talk about what's in the portfolio, and then if you have any questions, certainly feel free to ask that. On August 29th, at the Ruston Civic Center, we will have a session for all retirees to attend at 10 o'clock. Letters will be going out tomorrow to that effect for our retirees, and of course, they, as we know, last time, a large numbers of them showed up, and the process was not a positive one, but we feel much better about the process this time. If you'll look in the hand mail, you'll note that some of the questions and concerns that retirees previously had, we think all of these have been taken care of. We have begun meeting on more than one occasion now with Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they gave us the initial plan, and the initial plan looked good, but we asked them to go back and look at other things as well. And so they went back, and as you can see from the plan on the second page, it's like an insurance dream. That's what it is to me. Everything in and out of network is zero copay, except for $50, I believe, is an emergency service, as I recall, no, emergency emergency service, worldwide emergency emergency service, and it's the only thing that has any copay to it. So, an individual who has a doctor that is with weather snorting out of network, zero dollars. And so, if you flip over to the next page, you'll see the same thing. The generic drugs are basically zero dollars for 90 days as a charitable end drug. I'm not getting all the tears. There are people in here that can talk that better than I can, and Dr. Glad, you and Mr. Murphy can chime in on it, but this is, to me, is the gold standard of what insurance should be for retirees. On top of this, our retirees should not pay a premium. Now, their spouses will pay a premium, of course, or the premium is paid each month through their deductible, from their checks. But the fact is, this, I don't know that this could be any better when I look at it. And so, I was telling my wife about it, and she said, "Well, you need to go ahead and retire." I said, "Happen, make it so," because this is almost too good to be true for retirees. So, again, what I'd like to do is, if you have any questions about it, certainly we'll try to answer those, but we'll have a generalized meeting, again, August 29th at 10 o'clock at the Ruston Civic Center. The retirees wanted to have it a little later than the year. Having it in school on a 10 o'clock on school day is problematic for us. It would park, it would require retirees to park across the road from Ruston High. So, we thought a better way, we should have the Civic Center downtown, good parking and everything else. We can talk about it that day. Blue Cross Blue Shield will have large numbers of people up here. They will answer individual questions that retirees have. We'll have folks that can sit down with a retiree, and they can say, "Is my doctor in there? Is my medicine in there? Is my hospital in there?" So, we go person by person until we answer every question. So, that's the goal of the August 29th meeting, and then after that, I would like for us in September, I will be recommending this plan to the board for adoption at the September meeting.
I do wish we, I wish we could be covered every time.
Yes, well, it's, I've never seen anything like it. And initially, the savings from this that we shared with you last time would be around 1.1 million, one quarter, it was a little over a million. But with this plan, because of the way it's set up, it will save us about 600,000 a month. It's 580,000, I said month, that would be great. 580,000 per year. And so, that is significant for us. It makes our health insurance program more viable for the foreseeable future, and I think we'll answer all the questions that our retirees have. But we're open to questions, of course, and we want to be as transparent and open about this as we can. So, any questions that come up between now and the 29th, any of you, of course, in the call, and we will answer your questions, and then we'll have the meeting that I promised on the 29th. We're bringing our retirement committee in, one person at a time. Let me explain that to them as well, so they can ask any questions about this plan. So, hopefully, this will be the plan that will help us in our insurance program, as well as help our retirees.
And all the board members are welcome to come to the meeting, too.
Sure. Meet you everybody.
Do they give a term? I mean, it's not a one-year, it's not a one-year thing, is it?
Well, it's a one-year thing initially.
Yeah, I think we have to do that. I think we have to put it out there.
And what we're hearing is we want to make it as what really happens. And we've got an opportunity to go back the other way, but I, and what they're saying after they implement it at a place, they like it, so.
It's going to be better than what they have.
And really, the whole thing is Medicare is the whole key to the whole thing, and Medicare does not pay as much as we pay on our plan for these retirees, so Medicare is forcing the providers to provide, to accept less, as what it amounts to.
Question, so Medicare will be part of it?
Well, it's joint. It's a joint deal. You'll have one card, and it will have this Advantage Plan, Retirement Advantage Plan, and it'll be on the Blue Cross deal, so there you go. I think it's a good deal, and that was one of the complaints last time, was that we were going with Humana, and Humana, we said that out there, and they just did not like that name. Some of the doctors did not take Humana, so like, we went back and redid it, and it's taken two years, but I think it's, I think we're ready this time. We'll find out, and then, you know, hopefully, in September of next month, you guys will approve it, and we'll move forward, because it does take a while to make a change, even though our database back there's got everybody in there, there's only certain people that qualify for it, just retirees that are on Medicare, and we have a group of people that don't qualify for Medicare, so they would stay on our plan, so.
They may wish they were on this plan.
Yeah, they are. I mean, I'm fixing to be on this plan. I mean, I hope y'all voted in when I retire. Turn 65, I just want a plan, but I think this is a good plan. And we do appreciate the taxpayers renewing that tax, you know, the, actually, Ms. Juanita Duke and Gerald Cobb passed this tax initially about 20 years ago, and we renewed it twice, so it's like, this is great, you know?
So, this is going to help with the Medicare recipients, so that they won't have to worry about A, B, C, D, E, L?
They're still going to have to go through that process and get the A, B stuff, and then the D is the medicine, and we're still planning on doing the medicine through this plan, too, so.
Okay, cool.
But anyway, I know you guys, it's a hot topic. If y'all get phone calls, just let us know, give us the name of the people, and we'll try to, you know, give them the information they need.
But I think I've looked at it. It appears to be a better plan than the one that was before, and it cures a lot of the problems that the people had questions about a couple of years ago. But in the presentation, I would encourage you to have the folks from Baton Rouge to be very specific about how you pay, who they write the checks, to just get down to the grandeur stuff, so to speak, because right now, these people are, and myself too, we write a check to Medicare and all these things, and I think that's going to be an issue, is how we get it started, and who pays what, when, where, where the check goes of those transgressions.
We can do it.
Just get with them ahead of time.
Well, and our initial thoughts were, we'll say a few things about it, but I think the more important thing is, they can sit down one-on-one with a person and say, "Hey, is my stuff included?" And I think that, and those general questions, we'll get those answered, and we want to be more strategic this coming down than we were before, and make sure that when everybody walks out the door, they've had a chance to, one-on-one, face-to-face, talk to a Medicare, to a Blue Cross, and that's the goal.
Any questions about that, me or Mr. Murphy? Appreciate y'all's work on this, I know it has been an issue. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Murphy, continuing on with your reports.
Yes, sir. The first report's a sales tax report, and, you know, it went down after, you know, last year, it went down 11 straight months, and then we had one month where it went up, and we were hoping it would trend that way, but it went down for this month. We don't know whether that's a one-time thing, or whether we're going to come back and start going up again. But anyway, Juanita and I are going to meet with Denise Griggs on Friday and talk about it a little bit, and see what she thinks, and then after we talk to her, we'll come up with what we expect the revenue, the sales tax revenue's going to be for this fiscal year that we're in right now. So, anyway, this is down 7.26 percent, and then recoveries to audits are down, and then the next report we got, which is good, is a health care plan for the month. We're up 274,793 here to date. We're up 344,957, and as y'all are aware, that thing fluctuates from month to month, so it's good for right now. And that may be all good. That's all I got. I'll try to answer any questions anybody has about these two reports.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Murphy? All right. No kidding. Personnel, Dr. Lewis.
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to report one staff retirement, 15 faculty resignations, 24 points of reference, 41 faculty and staff recommendations, one food service resignation, seven food service points of reference, 12 food service recommendations, five custodian recommendations, two bus operator retirements, three bus operator recommendations.
You can visit, visit, visit. Have you? That time of year, I noticed I was telling Ms. Millstead and Ms. Bastian on the news, I thought Washoe Parish had 170 new hires, so that's a lot of new personnel. All right, thank you, Ms., Dr. Lewis. We sure appreciate your work on all this. I know it definitely keeps things moving smoothly. All right, any questions? If not, moving on to Mr. Peyton, construction of things.
Okay. All right, let's see what we have. All right, let's start that shooter elevator, and from time to time, I've talked to you about the new car line road, and we're getting real close to finish. That picture was taken this morning, and you can see in the background, the parish crews were on site. That white truck was a water truck. Yeah, I don't know where this thunderstorm came from, just out of nowhere, but obviously, they didn't have to use the water truck. But what they're doing with the water, they're compacting the road, and Friday or Monday, they're to put oil on that road. It's called, the brand name's MC-20, it's a primer, and it gets real hard and sets up. And when school opens, we'll be able to use that road with that primer, and the following week, they intend to tar and gravel, it's a clay aggregate rock that they put on it now. But that road is close to being finished, and the day before, you can see there's some dirt work along the edges, shoulders, they haul a bunch of dirt in, got the dozer, and smoothed it out where you can run a brush on the tractor along the edges of it without too much of a grade or anything, to save and keep it cut and clean. So, hopefully, within two weeks, we'll be through with this project and have a real nice, safe road for those car liners to be on. Okay, this is on the, this shooter elevator on the west campus. This, the wood line had kind of moved in on the campus 25, 30, 40 feet over a period of years. There was no fence there. Mr. Hogan wanted to secure his campus, so I talked to the guys that were working the parish, and they graciously ran the tractor, dozer down this line, cleared it all out, pushed the brush back in the woods, and the guys down there today, the contractor, putting the fence up. So, his entire campus in the front of the school will be where you can't, that's a six-foot chain-linked fence, 72 inches, so that'll secure his campus and keep kids from wandering out in the, you know, the brush and the woods, too. So, that's where, where we are on that. Ruston High School track, you know, I mentioned this on several occasions, they are completely finished with the track, and I might point out that, in my opinion, they did an excellent job. I can't see anything as of yet that they, that's wrong, and occasionally, when I go to another town or school district, if they've got a track, I'll go out there and look at theirs, and I haven't seen one yet that's as good as ours, as neat. If you're wondering what that cover, that with the yellow around the edges, part of the problem with our track, some of it was that the track didn't hold up, and the warranty money that they gave us helped pay for some of the places, but a lot of the problem was heavy pedestrian traffic on, on the track, and it's not designed for that. So, we ordered these canvas covers, Coach Ball did, he's got three of them. One of them is going to be placed where the football players come out of the Chero's Field House, and this is on the east side. There'll be another one on the, on the west side, where PE classes from Ruston High, hundreds of kids cross over that track every day, and this will protect the track from undue wear, and that's what that is. Press box. We're actually underway on construction with the press box. Things are looking pretty good. This is a construction crew, a subcontractor working for the main contractor. They're putting floor joists in, and I assume, this was this morning, I assume they probably finished. That's, those are two-by, two-by-10 carbonized lumber. They're probably, if they finish that, there probably won't be anything to happen much more this week, because the next big part of this project is some steel work that's going to have to be welded underneath those beams and those frames, and it's to start the contract, the superintendent on the job site told me that's to start Monday. So, once we get that in, they can really go up with the, with the press box. Frame it up, sides, roof, and it's a 60-day project, and we hope to, nothing happens, to be through with it by the end of September. Okay, STEM Center. Later on in our meeting this afternoon, I'll be asking you to approve a substantial completion and a change order that deals with the STEM. You notice the logo on the building, the sign over there, it's real pretty, real neat. Pay particular attention to, to the south side of the building, all that dirt work in there, looks like a ditch, well, it is a ditch. And when I talked to you about the change order, we had originally planned to put a concrete swale through there, but it was decided that it'd probably look better and hold up better if we just graded down. But I'll tell you more about that when we talk about the change order, but that's, that's what I will be talking about there. Okay? Now, the interior shot, everything's clean, furniture for STEM comes in, and the technology on Monday of next week, so I think they're already, Ms. Willie's already moving some of her stuff in her office, so she's getting ready to use the building. Okay, this is the driveway. Let me orient you, tell you where this is. Coming down to North Service Road, like you're going to Ruston Junior High, there's a driveway that cuts in that goes towards the Junior High and the Bus Barn, right next to a fuel depot there where we fuel our buses. Okay, well, this driveway, where it meets up behind there, you see that tripod behind you with an instrument on it? Originally, it was like a 15% grade, real steep grade, going down to the exit service road there, and we had a discussion, Neil DeForest, next to me here, our engineer, we just told him that wasn't going to work with buses with a 15% grade, so they agreed to come on our property about 150 feet, and they dug it down. And you can see the concrete of the service road out behind you is not going to be much of a grade at all. And that line that you see, that's the only holdup, that's a 200 pair AT&T phone line, and they just dug around it and left it hanging up in the air. But they're, they've got a work order, and they're supposed to fix that, I think, tomorrow, so they can finish this project, and I talked to these people in charge two hours ago, and this road, this driveway, will be open on the opening day of school. They'll have it concrete and ready to use. So, that's one of the major avenues into and out of Junior High School for car riders and buses. Okay? All right, that's the tar button, the new tar button road. You see the old tar button road to the left and the bridge? I didn't have, I forgot to grind the pointer, so, but I can just kind of show what I need to tell the board.
The old tar button's here.
Yeah. Show them the service road, the new service road where it intersects up there, keep, right there.
Okay, you got it.
Yeah, there, a little bit higher. That road is, that service road will be open by the time school opens, too. So, not only will you be able to come down the driveway, you can come all the way to the new tar button road, turn to the right, and come in the front driveway down here where those traffic islands are coming into the school. So, the bridge, they're basically the roof of the concrete work. I talked to the guys, like I said, less than two hours ago, they said on September the 2nd, they intend to open the bridge. So, we'll be able to go across the bridge, and they will open the south service road, the road the Temple Baptist Church is on. That will be open.
Will they switch it to one-way traffic?
No, no, there won't be any, that's a good question, Ms. Turner. It will remain two-way until the project is finished, and that's going to be sometime after the 1st of the year, February or March, and then the north service road will be one-way west, the south service road will be one-way east.
And the old tar button road, will that become?
That'll be kind of like our little.
Will that become our property?
Our property and our driveway, coming into the Bus Barn and into the car line area of Ruston Junior High School. That's exactly what. But once it's finished, it's kind of complicated now, and I'm sure there'll be some confusion, but once it's finished, and everything is out of there, it's going, it's going to work out, and be better and safer in the long run. Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Peyton. Moving into unfinished business, Ms. Bastian approved policy manual revision.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, we were just asked that you do these policy revisions tonight. These were given to you last month. The first one's on annual leave, and the second one is immunizations.
Okay, heard this recommendation on these two policy revisions. Any questions? Will we approve? Motion by Ove Van der S, second by Lisa Best. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Permission to accept bid on Ruston High School's lights and poles. Mr. Millstead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, in your portfolios, you should have a bid tag relationship that we put in there probably just at the beginning of the night. We open bids at 2:00, and in that process, we have three bidders, and you'll see the names of those bidders there. There is a complicating, somewhat of a complicating issue, although we reconcile shortly. The, you notice the base bids, and if you go strictly on base bids, you have Geosport with the lowest base bid, but when you add in additive alternative number one, then it's Allbritton's. The complicating factor is, I'm glad Mr. Walpole is here to kind of maybe set us straight on that, has to do with, whether or not the additive alternative is necessary, and if it's not necessary, then you can see that Geosport would get the bid. If it is necessary, then Allbritton's will get the bid. That determination will be made, hopefully, by next, I think, the first of next week before we decide, Mr. Walpole, that there's some test that has to be run to determine if the, if the alternative, additive alternative number one is necessary. So, once that test is run, then we can make a determination, but I still would like to go ahead and recommend that whichever it is, that you vote to accept the lowest bid. This comes in considerably less than what we thought it would be. I was anticipating 200,000, and so, the most it will be is 148,900, that's the add, that's Allbritton's bid with the additive alternative, and then if it's not that, if that's not necessary, the bid is 120,000. And so, what will happen is, after we get the information that we need to make that determination, then I'll call Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Hancock, and among the three of us, we will agree to accept it. So, that's kind of where we are, but I still would like to recommend that we go ahead and accept the lowest bid for this field lights at Ruston High School.
Motion by Dr. Glad. Second by Danny Hancock. Everyone understands what we're, how we're voting. We're voting on the lowest bidder, not necessarily.
What was that test that was going to run on?
It's a megone test, which, what we're, don't know at this point, is when the poles got destroyed and pulled down, we don't know if it damaged the wire in the conduit, and so they have a test that they can run through the conductors called a megone test, and that test will determine if the conductors or the wire needs to be repulled. The cost that you see as the additive alternate is the cost of the wire, if we have to repull the wire. But since the test hadn't been run, we don't know if we need it or not. So, we made a recommendation this afternoon that we get a third party to do the megone test, so it would be impartial whether it's needed or not needed, and then we visited with electrical engineer this afternoon after the test, and we thought that was a fair way to address it.
Thank you.
Any questions? Both companies have access to the polls?
They do. I actually talked to one of the suppliers about 45 minutes ago. There's two different companies, obviously. The one that Allbritton bid was the supplier that called me, and he indicated that he could get the polls there in about four weeks. So, if that happens, I'm confident we can get the lights up by October 1st. That's our goal. It's a hard goal to meet, between that and the press box, it's a worthy goal, and we're going to do our best to get it done. I just don't want everybody to be too upset if we miss it, because everything's got to work just right for it to happen. Do you agree with that, Mr. Peyton?
Right, correct. The last time I told you maybe.
No pressure at all. Don't before it's homecoming, you know?
That's about the 100th time I've heard that. We've got big plans.
If all works out, these polls, there's a good chance, you know? There's a good chance. We'll make it.
And we're very confident insurance will pay for this, just like they're paying for the press box. We will not be out dollars on this. We've already made a, we've long since ago made our deductible on the insurance.
They were probably shocked when we came in below.
Yeah, actually, I've not communicated since we just said that, we have not sent this to Daniel.
All right. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. All right, thank you, Mr. Millstead. New business, fall school instructional supply allocation. Mr. Murphy?
Mr. President, this right here is something that's an annual request to the board, and the amounts on a pure equal basis remain the same as previous year, so I recommend that you approve this allocation.
Okay, we have a list of these schools' amounts there in the portfolio. Any questions, Mr. Murphy and Ms. Otto? Room 10 matter?
Thank you, motion approved.
Motion by Lisa Best, second by Mike Barnmore. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Approved change order number two for the STEM Center. Mr. Peyton?
Okay, sir. Change order number two, it has two parts. One deals with a water line regulator, and basically what this is about is that the water pressure in the main line coming into the STEM Center is too high. The plumber that did the work put a gauge on it and a graph, and it fluctuates between 75 and 120 pounds. That's unacceptable, or at least the high end of it is. It's a danger that, you know, that could blow the seals out of interior plumbing inside the building, so we're looking at. So we're looking at, you know, installing a water pressure regulator there so we can regulate the pressure going to the building. Okay? Item number two, as I mentioned a minute ago, the concrete swell that was not constructed on the south side of the building. We did the grading of the dirt rather than build the concrete swell because we thought, two or three reasons. The maintenance on it would be easier because it would be grass and you can mow it. It'll look better. And then there's a pretty steep grade coming down from the service road. That could cause a problem. You want to add to that, Mr. Walpole?
I would like to add one thing. The other reason we did it, the original completion date on the road project under their contracts, May 2020. And we thought, when we were preparing the plans, that our, we knew our project was gonna be done ahead of their plan, of their project. Well, we had to anticipate, for those that have gone out and looked, I'm sure y'all all have, the original road wasn't but about thirty feet from our new building. And I had a couple of comments, why'd you build the building so close to the road? And I kept saying, well, wait till the road gets moved and you're not gonna feel that way. But since our project was ahead of theirs by about nine months, I had to anticipate or take the approach, hey, they're not gonna be finished and we're gonna be finished. And I gotta make this work until they are finished. If we hadn't have done what we're doing now, we would have basically had to tear out the little retaining wall and regrade that at a point, maybe next year. But it's really great that it happened this way because we worked with a contractor to basically offset the cost of what was that concrete swell. And there's a lot of dirt work. That was an excellent photo that you had up there between the edge of the new service road and the edge of the building, and I think it was a win-win for everybody, so. I'm glad Mr. Peyton worked with him and Neil worked with him as well to get that done.
Okay, finish up the cost of the water regulator, $3,000 plus $2,000 to install. And then it was determined that some of the feedings there were copper. And the materials in labor to install copper to plastic feedings is $5,000. So we have a $5,000 hardware allowance to pay for some of it, so the actual cost of the change order will be approximately $5,000. And my recommendation to the board is to approve change order number two for the water regulator installment at the STEM and the admission of a concrete swell for $5,000.
Can you get on that real quick?
Sir?
Can you get right on that?
Well, I can't answer that. What about that?
Yes, I can answer that. The swell work and all, yes. The regulator, talked to the mechanical engineer again, I guess, yesterday. He has sized the type of regulator. It's a little bit of a complicating problem because the regulator into the main school's acting up too. So we're getting it checked on. If you go out there now and look, when the water fluctuates, you go, it, it rattles like that, and I don't want it to rupture the line. It'd be bad to have school with no water. And so we're, it's a parallel or a two-part problem that we're dealing with. High water pressure, I mean, at my office, the water pressure's fifty pounds. Delivery in the city of Ruston's typically fifty to sixty pounds. Out there, you heard him say it goes up to as high as a hundred and twenty here. And so it's an unusual thing, but it's something we're dealing with.
The work on the swell is basically finished. Other than today came a big thunderstorm out there, and there are a few places that held water, and they're gonna straighten that out. But as far as the main dirt work, it's finished other than, you know, the decision of what kind of mat or grass, you know, to put in to hold the soil. So anyway, that's, that's my recommendation.
Okay, heard the recommendation. Do we approve this change order number two? Motion by Danny Hancock. Second by George Matt Jr. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Peyton. Alright, revise the budget for 2018-19. Mr. Murphy.
Mr. President, if y'all would, turn to Exhibit A. We'll talk about the beginning budget and we'll talk about the revised budget. If you look on the left hand, if you got your, yeah, your blue book, I just gave them that right there. If you look on the left-hand side, it's got the beginning budget. And on the right-hand side, it's got Exhibit A and it's called revised budget. And we'll kind of summarize this thing, but if y'all have questions, please feel free to ask them. Okay, on the left-hand side, on the fourth column, where it's got excess deficiency. When we first put this together last September, we anticipated a 2.1 million dollar loss. And as a matter of fact, we're going up with the beginning budget now for this year that we're in, and we'll have that to you in September. But anyway, this was done in September of last year, and here we are, eleven months later. And when we got the, the numbers, the actual numbers that we're dealing with right now on the revised budget, if you look on the right-hand side in the fourth column, it looks like it's gonna be 5.3 million. So there is a three million dollar difference, and part of it is due to the decrease in the sales tax during the year. And we were reporting all last year about it going down, going down, going down. So it ended up being close to $2 million. So the three million dollar difference, two million of it is sales tax revenue. And then the rest of it is up there in the general fund, and that has to do with the MFP. And so that was due to a mid-year adjustment. So what we did was Kathy Poole contacted the state and sent them an email. They sent us the email back, and so we actually called them and talked to them today. And here's what they said. They said about 400,000 of it was due to drop in our enrollment. And then there was about 500 that was due to an increased allotment to the charter school. And here's what it's actually called. It's called the local revenue representation per pupil amount. And it was 5567, 5,567 initially, and then they raised it to 6,321. And they had additional students, so they got more money. So 500,000 of it is due to charter school. 400,000 is due to us having a decrease in students. So when you add those two together, it's around 2.8 million, which is pretty close to what the difference is. And it's, it's pretty easy to explain how it happened, but we still, when you look at it, it's still $5 million in the hole. And last year, we were five million, so you add them up together, you got 10 million or so. However, even despite the fact that we're down 10 million in two years, we still have adequate reserves. However, that could change if we don't do something now. And Mr. Milstead, Ms. Bastian, Dr. Lewis, Julie Stevenson, that crew, and all the principals in the parish, Mr. Milstead got with them and said, look, we gotta do something about this deficit. So it's been a long, tough, arduous process. And for several months, there was a lot of gnashing of teeth, pulling hair and all that kind of stuff. But the bottom line is, you gotta live within your budget. So they went through there, and they had a target amount for each one of the schools. And I think we pretty much got that nailed down as to how many certificated employees are gonna go down. And we're gonna, we're working on exactly how much money that involves. And in the meantime, we're trying to put, trying to nail down exactly what the repair professionals are gonna cost as far as how many we cut there. And we didn't really cut them. It was attrition. So anyway, I think we're heading in the right direction. I think this is a positive. I'm optimistic about coming this next year. And there's a lot of numbers to be pulled before we get to next month in the budget that we present. And we're hoping we can get it to bounce, but we don't know yet because there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot involved. So anyway, that's kind of talking about revised budget and next year's budget. But one thing I want to point out, if you go to right there near the end of your book, it's actually in Exhibit E. This is something positive too. If you look at the top line on Exhibit E, under, I think it says, General Fund. But anyway, here is the number. The number on the General Fund, if you can find it, is eight million, 60,000. And that right there in and of itself is not bad. Because when we present the budget next month, we're gonna show you what 15% of General Fund expenditures are. And we're gonna start with this number. It's gonna be around eight million dollars. So we're still at the 15% range as far as having coverage, and that's, that's really good. It's good for standard and pores, and it's good for the state. So that, that number's good. But as we move forward into this next year, we need to make sure we protect that number. And like I say, I think we're heading in the right direction. I don't anticipate sales tax to tank like they did this past year. But we'll find out about that number two, and we'll come up with something that's reasonable. And that's all this budget is. It's just trying to give you the most accurate information we can at the time that we put it together. So having said way too much, does anybody have any questions? Mal, Peyton, anything? Anyway, we'd ask that you would approve this revising.
You've heard the explanation where you understood it.
We, we do appreciate, I know there's a lot of factors involved, and we do appreciate...
Oh, and why do you have things on site?
One of you got your job cut out for you in the future. Get this, get this back under control. It's, it's not anything that we've done necessarily. It's just a factor of mainly oil and gas exploration going down. It's the main, the main issue here. But hopefully this World Series will induce some sales tax, and the usual shopping center will induce the sales tax. So maybe we'll be on the uphill again.
Alright, we have recommendations that we approve this revised budget, 2018-19 budget. Motion by Lisa Best. Second by Debbie Abrams. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Sir.
Alright. Grant permission to advertise for bid for construction of parking lot at Simsboro School. Mr. Peyton.
Okay, as the background indicates, additional parking area at Simsboro School is needed. And of course, that's true with all schools. You know, there's always shortage of parking. The discussion of this parking lot, Simsboro School, been in the making for three years. It was originally designed, and it was so expensive, it just kind of, we just kind of dropped it. Forgot about it for a while. But I got hope from Mr. Neil Forrest sitting next to me, civil engineer. He does a lot of work for Mr. Walpole. And he redesigned the parking lot with considerable savings. It's, it's affordable. And the new parking lot will be located across from the school. Where most of the kids are parked, a lot of the kids park now at Simsboro is actually not even our property. It belongs to the church. We got a good relationship with the church. They're Simsboro Baptist. We get along good with them. They let us park there. And the new parking lot will be immediately south of the church parking lot there. And when constructed, it'll be fifty park, additional parking places. It'll be asphalt. It'll be concrete curd, lighted, and striped. So it's gonna be top-notch, a real nice parking lot. And as the background indicates there, the school has enough money in their M and O, their maintenance and operational funds to pay for it. So if there's not any questions, my recommendation that the board grant permission for us to advertise for bids for the new parking lot at Simsboro School.
Have a question, Mr. Peyton. Any question on the public? Motion by David Gilat. Second by Danny Hancock. We grant permission to advertise for bids. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, now grant permission to execute substantial completion documents for the STEM Center. Mr. Peyton.
Okay, this is kind of routine business, but construction work at the STEM is basically over. Save the punchless items, the things that the architects, people found that need a little touch-up work here and there. And they're finishing that up now. So each, each time we do a construction project like this, I need to ask, perform a permission from the board to execute the substantial completion. That means, once this is done, we become the, the district becomes the owner of the building, responsible for everything, insurance and whatever. So my recommendation is the grant, the board grant permission to authorize superintendent staff, engineer to execute substantial completion documents for the STEM Center.
Okay, heard the recommendation. Any questions? Second. Motion by Oka. Anders, second by Hunter Smith. Grant this substantial completion documents. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we gonna have a meeting there next month?
Yes, I've seen my regards.
Look forward for, for the tour. Okay, approve a resolution authorizing superintendent to designate authorized persons on bank account at first guarantee. You have this resolution in your packet, and I believe Mr. Murphy decided we need to read it.
Yeah, this is one of those deals that I hadn't seen before, but the bank required it. Tried to talk them out of it. I wasn't successful. I said, okay, we'll put it on the agenda of your, your resolution and get the board to pass it. What caused it is we have three employees in food service that retired, so we have to put three new names on there as far as signatures. And in the past, Mr. Milstead has had the authority as a secretary of the board to do these things on his own. We do that with origin, but this bank is requiring that. So anyway, that's what we're asking to do, is approve the resolution, and I will read the resolution. Lincoln Parish School Board, the following resolution was authored by blank, second by what? Resolution, a resolution authorizing establishment of one or more deposit accounts at first guarantee bank on behalf of Lincoln Parish School Board for deposit of public fund, providing for the superintendent to designate authorized person, persons who act on such accounts and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Whereas, Lincoln Parish School Board, acting through its governing authority, the board pursuant to law, desires to provide for the deposit and disbursement of public funds held by Lincoln Parish School Board in order to carry out its public functions. And whereas, the board desires to establish one or more deposit accounts at first guarantee bank for this purpose, and now therefore be resolved by the board acting as the governing authority of Lincoln Parish School Board, that section one authorization. One or more deposit accounts shall be established by the board at first guarantee bank for the deposit and disbursement of public funds to enable the board to carry out its public functions. Section two, terms. The superintendent D and E is hereby authorized and empowered to direct to represent the board in connection with said deposit accounts. Which shall be on such terms and conditions as said superintendent in his, her sole discretion deems fit and proper. Section three, authorized officers. The superintendent is authorized to manage and operate said account accounts, including and not limited to designate authorized signers on account accounts to make deposits. Sign endorsed checks and negotiable instruments on behalf of the board and draw or transfer funds from said account accounts, as he deems advisable, and to execute all documents in connection therewith, and as he may deem necessary to effect the transactions contemplated by this resolution. Section four, effective date. This resolution shall become effective immediately. While prior acts undertaken on behalf of the board with respect to deposit account accounts at first guarantee bank are ratified and confirmed. The foregoing resolution having been submitted to a vote, the vote thereon was as follows. Yays, nays, absent, whereupon this resolution was declared to be adopted by the board on this blank day of blank. Secretary of President, State of Louisiana, City of blank. Aye, the undersigned secretary of the board do hereby certify that the foregoing constitutes a true and correct copy of a resolution adopted by the board on blank, authorizing the establishment of one or more deposit accounts with first guarantee bank for the deposit of public funds and providing for other matters in connection therewith. And they wear off, witnesses by official signature by the secretary of the board on this blank day of blank. Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Alright, roll call vote. Anders needs to excuse himself.
Do we have to do, oh thanks, do we have to do an offer in a second? I think that's at the top box.
Yeah.
Do you think?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, your motion?
Motion would be yes.
Okay. Can you make the motion also?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Anders, motion Susan Wiley, like in seconds. Alright, roll call vote.
Ms. Lynn Henderson is asking. Hunter Smith?
Yes.
Martha Anders?
Yes.
George Matt?
Yes.
Debbie Abrams?
Yes.
Danny Hancock?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Ferguson.
Yes.
David Gilat?
Yes.
Yes. There'll be eleven yays and no nays and one absent. Thank you very much. Alright, moving into this report of the superintendent. Mr. Milstead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Several little items here, nothing earth-shattering, but in your portfolio, you have an invitation from Sheriff Mike Stone related to a section for Deputy Mark Taylor. Mark Taylor has been the sheriff's department for Ireland Island many, many years. And he's been in charge of our school resource officers and extended nations about that, so. So Mr. Kirk Taylor will be retiring, and the reception is out of the sheriff's safety center on Farmville Highway. That'll be this coming Friday at four to six, if you choose. He's been very, very important, he's very significant. Along with that, I wanna mention that our school safety can be just the top topic for us. Just as events unfold in the nation, and then as we have kids that witnessed that, or we witnessed that, and we see things that can happen on a moment's notice. And I just think the El Paso event where a man drove 625 miles to commit an act, he didn't even live in El Paso. So the mental stability of any citizens is in question as far as I'm concerned. So not a whole lot we can do about that. The fact is, we can make our schools as safe as we can make them. So that's the goal, and of course, I've talked to you before about some sequential steps that we're going through to make that possible. We'll be coming to you in the not-too-distant future about some devices and processes that we'll be putting in place that will help make our schools safe. I just wanna mention in passing, I've sent you an email about the internet system and being shut down because of the cyber emergency declared by the governor. When that happens, of course, you have to sit up and take note. He made recommendations that we shut everything down, or his office did, shut everything down and bring it back up to six phases. We thought that would take a week, that, I think we shut it down. I wanna say Ms. Pender was Wednesday.
Last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday. And so by Friday, we essentially had everything up and running, and that's due to Ms. Pender and to Seth Grigsby, RIT people, they're fantastic, and so they got right on that, put extra hours in. And so now the system is back up, and we're all thankful, because this time of year is pretty critical for us here at the school board office. So thank you, Ms. Pender, and thanks to Seth Grigsby, and hopefully that will not happen again. Cyber emergencies are not fun. There were several school systems around Tangier Cohola, Sabine, Monroe City, and Morehouse, all, I'm not sure they're up now, because if you're infected with that ransomware, getting everything back online is problematic. So we're appreciative. Mr. Grigsby had just installed a new firewall in the spring of this past year, of this year as a matter of fact. And so that probably helped to protect us. And now then, because of what he did, we're probably even protected to the extent that you can be. There's always somebody out there that has a plan to hack you and to get into a system. You always gotta guard against it. We try to give our employees the best instructions possible about what they can do to prevent that from happening. It could be one person of six or seven hundred employees who, or the Lincoln Parish School Board's educators, get one attachment, goes to a computer, and then can infect everything. So thank goodness for a firewall to help to prevent that. And then the upcoming events is really the only other things that I have. We had administrators meeting last Thursday, and all our principals in, and all our assistant principals in, and a lot of central office staff, and we began to talk to them about expectations for the upcoming year, policy changes and things like that. So that was a very good meeting, very positive, everybody seemed upbeat in anticipating the upcoming school year. Then the Friday after that, we had all of our new teachers in, and Dr. Lewis was in charge of that, and that was a great event as well. They met mostly today, it was like nine to three in the afternoon or something. So it was good to see them, and it's unusual, they were all on time, and they were all there. And so we were delighted to see that. I mean, that's like a dang miracle right there. So we were excited about that, and we've got some great teachers, small numbers this year compared to previous years as far as replacement teachers. Also, PD begins tomorrow for our teachers. So the school year for us, as far as in personnel is concerned, is, begins tomorrow. They will be in PD tomorrow, and Thursday, or Friday, they will be at their schools. And then Monday and Tuesday, as you know, will be Monday at Ruston High School. Again, if you choose to come, we'd love to have you there. Our general convocation, our general opening, where we have all of our employees there. And then on Tuesday, we'll be at Howard Auditorium for the morning session, because we have these folks who will talk school safety to us Tuesday morning. And Tuesday afternoon, I've made the decision to bring us back to Ruston High, because we need breakout sessions at Ruston High. We have the classrooms there to be able to do that. So Tuesday morning at Howard Auditorium, Tuesday afternoon back at Ruston High. So looking forward to that. And then, I think that is all I have, other than the September board meeting. Just keep in mind, the plan is now to meet out at the STEM Center. And supposedly, all the roads will be fixed, and we can get out there easily if you can, and go toward Mr. Millstead's place and turn back and head south back toward Ruston Junior High. But we think it's gonna be all finished and ready to go. The STEM Center is finished, essentially, but the fact is, getting there may be problematic. So hopefully that will be taken care of, and we'll have a board meeting there. It's a beautiful facility, Mr. Walco left us, but the design on that is a unique building in Lincoln Parish. And once you get in there and see it, you will be favored, be impressed, I believe. I believe it's all out, Mr. President.
What time is it? Twelve, thirteen, eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock, both seconds.
Is the public invitation at all on the Tuesday? Or is it just more, is it just?
We have invited some extra people. Who's in a tech's been invited, law enforcement's been invited. These people have studied, as I mentioned, a lot of school students. But then the afternoon session, we're paying it per person fee, so we try to keep it to our personnel, obviously y'all are welcome to come.
I was just curious.
Yes, yes.
As far as safety-wise, you know, the other schools, as far as like, something like that, you know?
We have not extended, but not being bad, I did, though, to extend it to see, for the morning session.
That's correct.
We can do that, it's probably one at Howard, because it has about 1,100 seats, and we have a lot of the numbers over there. Need to get there early, you know, tech is out of session, but still, if you go to graduation, you understand that getting to Howard Auditorium is no real close place to park. So that's part of Madison Parking Lot, or the White Tower Parking Lot, and then after that. Good luck.
All right. Any comments, board members? Ms. Lee the Best?
Make the motion with a chair.